Okay, I think we will open the meeting at six thirty-five. Um, open meeting act is posted. People say please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a fairly short agenda tonight, so hopefully we would like to be here till midnight. The roll call starts with James.
Here.
Bob.
Present.
Larry. You're done.
Here.
And who did I guess? There you go.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so all present. So the minutes are in your packet and I'll make an apology for not getting the packets out thirsty like I promised to spend. So several things have happened behind the scenes even though the agenda's short. So those are just the minutes of the last meeting, we approved all the others. So I think those were sent away a little bit.
I'm making motion.
If they got out to you today, fine, if not, you should see what you've had in any packet here.
How do you get a packet out?
Okay. So any questions or if you had a chance to read the minutes, take a look at those. First one down gets to make the most.
I'll make a motion group of that.
James made a motion to approve.
Awesome.
Second by Bob. So we'll start with Bob.
Yes.
Uh, Larry.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
So, um, don't have any kinds of ordinance or anything to consider tonight there. We don't have any requests from the public that have come in. So we have the, the claims are there. If there's any questions on that.
As far as estimate and ratio, I'm assuming the water dill is becoming a duty?
Yeah.
Pool, fill in the pool.
The pool has a big, that was a big deal.
I assumed it's in the summer thing.
Yep, and some of the personal uses scared me to death. I thought for sure they were. You know, because they're just with the lawns, what sprinkling and so forth. And even though we're limited, we're more than other units.
Uh, payroll?
Payroll is everybody.
Fifteen grand was pretty typical month and thirty-two grand was?
Good, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Summer help.
This would be high, yeah. You're gonna see, um, you know, with the pool, where you're gonna see a lot of difference. So you gotta, the record bill's done there, it'd be higher than those kind of things.
And then as far as the garbage, then we have. People have multiple containers, that's what makes the additional expense there. Close double with the estimates.
Was it two months?
It's two months.
It, oh, it's two months somehow. I do wanna say while we're on the garbage though, just in case anybody missed this, we think put in paper last week or sometime. Brett Davis out at Arts Garbage had suggested, we talked about this some time ago, and apparently when they pick up our recycle, they, the drivers are the locally, they separate the cardboard before they haul it. He said, you know, you got, and we've talked about this, how much cardboard it's always in there. Said it takes time, it takes our manpower. So he's, he wanted to put, he called and said, can we put him on the total? That's gonna help us because they're not charging us for it, because they're saving money. And they'll pick that cardboard up twice a week, just like they do the business.
So we're talking about the one out of the shop?
Yeah.
So there's cardboard going in there and like a little?
No, nothing but cardboard. The big, the big mixed recycle trailer, like it always was. They came with one, they put right behind it, like it's got six lids. It's a two yard maybe, three yard.
Okay.
And there's nothing but cardboard goes in there.
It's white in color.
White? I haven't been up.
It's white.
Okay. So what they're hoping is that they'll take all that cardboard out of the recycle trailer. We've been picking up at least twice a month on that. That should reduce that, so that'll reduce the cost of that and there's no extra charge for the cardboard pickup, so we should come up better. We should save money and they'll save money on the time they spend sorting. So hopefully it'll be a win-win. We know there's people from out of town use it, that's, you know, that's okay as long as, you know. If you ever are there, you see, I was out there one day and somebody bought a rocking chair, the box was in there, I don't know how they got it through the door. But the big one, and then if you got, I got the lid up and there's all that film and the, you know, styrofoam and grass and wire, it's garbage. So I got it pulled over there and pulled all that out and threw it and then took it over and put it in our garbage. And then right behind it was like some filming, you know, just garbage. So the guys watch it when they're there, I know, I know Ed's pulled stuff out of there. So if we know that something, because if it really gets bad, they'll charge us garbage rates instead of recycle rates and that gets higher. Brett is real pleased, he said, you know, basically they're still one of the cleanest ones we pick it up, that we pick up, so keep it up, you know. But it doesn't hurt to just remind people once in a while that that's, and that may help if we're, if the, if the, because people tend to throw the cardboard in there full of stuff, you know. And then if they don't break the box down, then you've got half the trailer full of that. So if we just get that moved over to another place, yeah.
Just for your information, that dumpster was placed the end of last week and this morning it was over full already.
Of the cardboard?
Of cardboard, but the box, some of the boxes weren't broken down like they could've been, so we just wanna make sure. I put a little handwritten on a piece of cardboard for now, but we may want to.
I thought about that.
Break down boxes.
Yes, some signs there. And I thought about even on the, on the other recycle, maybe we could put one that said cardboard back there or something, or just if they're not putting it in there. But if they pick it up twice a week, see, that'll be gone tomorrow.
Right.
So.
It was there. Jessica.
So I think it's a plus.
Tell me, how come the Black Hills Energy, that's our gas, right?
Yes.
This is hot enough outside, so I don't understand why we got fourteen hundred dollars on our gas bill once summertime. My gas bill is looking nothing.
Uh, the heat, they heated the pool when they first start there, again, we're talking pool.
So all the five hundred dollars is, is the pool?
Well, the sheriff, yeah.
Yeah, that's just the pool. That's charged to the pool.
And Ben, and we're always gonna have monthly, you know, you've always got a monthly charge. You pick asshole.
I do too, I pay my monthly too, but my name's here.
I'm saying monthly we have a base charge, so you're not gonna get out of that. So then you add the pool and we have got, we got nine. Come in, look at the bills. What else?
What is F and O at the bottom of claims?
Um, First National Bank, that's a credit card. Okay.
I'm a claim, that's part of the screen being right?
Yes. And the credit cards hide this month because it puts something big on it. In fact, it shut our credit off and so somebody, I mean.
It was the asphalt.
Yes, the asphalt from Menards. We talked about that, maybe we should get a Menards card that we could put that stuff on. Then that would be separate.
You've tried to.
And, and maybe set up with no tax on stuff because otherwise they keep taxes. So then, and we could, if maybe even go to contractors if they will let us. Patrick's got one.
Oh.
But then you get that ten percent back without applying for it and it goes under. So we're gonna look into that.
Patrick eats the cost of the tax right now?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
I have, I have a contractor starting from years back and pays you back like one or two percent. It wouldn't, and then Cheryl was trying to explain why that was a problem, to, to not use my credit card, or why we wanna set up a city one.
Don't the city has a credit card though?
Well, do not, not at Menards, we're talking about a Menards card.
Wow. You can't use a city charge for a credit card at Menards, is that what?
This is, this credit card is through First National Bank, okay? It's a Visa or whatever it is. All we're saying is that since we're buying so much material for the roads from Menards, it might be who of us to have a separate credit card for Menards. Um, look into the possible. See what they can offer us, it'll be.
Yeah, the tax, yeah.
Yes, and some, and we had that for a while with them and then in the same way with, you know, some of those guys in South Dakota don't think they wanna do that. But according to the auditors, they say legally they can't charge you tax.
Oh, really?
So we've been working on that. Walmart got a little bit nasty for a while too.
That's fifteen dollars, eighty-six cents tax on what Patrick, if the number of what it was, would be taxed.
That's mine.
Right now, Menards will not let me out of the store without paying the tax. They, they've gone back on what they were doing six months, a year ago, we were getting a tax free and the, and the cashier said we can't honor that, we can't do that anymore.
And I, I think, I think what it is, is we're gonna have to go to somebody like the court, like a Menards internet, you know, because these locals say, well, you don't qualify because of, you're not like a, like a contractor or non-exempt, but, but we are non-exempt and just because we're out of state doesn't make a difference. So we've just gotta find the right people, you know. Walmart looked us in the eye and said, you're not on the list as a non, you know, as a nonprofit. Well, every city is. So it's, it's just getting hold of the right people and right now everybody's shorthanded and you can't get, you know, through the big way either, so I'm assuming.
Menards did that to the troops too.
Yeah.
They won't let us pay tax against where we are.
It's like you gotta be on this list. Well, who puts you on the list? Well, we don't know, but it's not on the list. They gotta go around in circles there.
I just thought because we're across the border.
Yeah, they wanted us to fill out the paperwork for non-exempt and the South Dakota side and when we did that, they said, well, you can't do that because you're not in South Dakota. So, see, it's a circle. Everybody guessing what state law says.
So, hey, I know it's possible because if it still works for, for a while, so I can still walk in and charge tax free, but I need to kinda, like, so we just gotta get the right papers.
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
So what's Miller associated for five hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
That was the rest of the con, the very first billing contract that they had put out. We've only paid them a total of three or some thousand, whatever.
So at this point, when that gets paid, then Miller's gonna be putting another bill until we decide what we're gonna do, is that correct?
Well, we've decided what we're doing. I mean, they've got the contract. I mean, they're, they're our engineer, so whatever, where they go next with it, they'll, they'll do the next billing cycle based on.
Yeah. Well, my question is, is did they give us a, you know, we're going with what we're doing without either there or they?
No, we are headed there, we decided that last meeting.
We are. That.
James made a motion to move to the lagoon on the Potts Place and to start the process of exploring for the money and they are working on that right now. That's what they're working at, getting funding.
We had to pick a site so they could start.
Did you, did you, did you see a, a final figure what Miller was gonna put for our lagoon price?
No, because that's what they're working on right now.
They were working on just the, we got funding is what I heard.
Well, they're working.
Funding had to be there before they could do anything, correct?
Well, they got enough price where they know.
I'm talking to Jim.
Excuse me?
We had to pick a site for them to start the funding. Without a site, no, we're, this site over here is not off the table yet. Um, but it is as far as I'm concerned because he's never gonna sign the paper. We had to pick a site in order for them to start to get the funding.
So we don't, do we have a, some kind of a figure what this is gonna be? A ballpark figure at least?
I don't know if they.
At the very first meeting?
Yeah, the very first meeting.
We would come in several times, segments of that, three million dollars.
Three and some change at that first meeting.
Keeps it going up as long as you'd like.
Yeah. But we won't have a final price till they put their number together. We got through step one of fifty steps. Find out the piece property balance, step two, step three. That'll probably be fifteen steps before we can see if I can do it.
Cause the initial thing was, what we asked for USDA grant was?
Yeah.
Two point three million, one point five million homes and then eight hundred thousand per grant. That's what you said it'd be on the poll.
Yeah. That sounds about right.
But since it has changed.
Yeah.
But that, I, yeah.
And it's gonna change, it's gonna go up, it's gonna change.
And that was kinda back in that first.
Right, right.
Wasn't the one there.
And I don't know if that wasn't, that wasn't based on.
That was way back.
Repair of that, right?
Yeah, probably.
Was that the phone conversation that you and Jim and Bob were on?
Uh, no, what that conversation was just over was just put together, you know, what's available? What's available out there for grants where we're at? That's really, I mean, is that what you got on that phone, phone call, what, what is available? He says he wasn't a hundred percent sure what's available.
He said you, you're gonna wind up going through USDA no matter what you do. So he was gonna get ahold of Anthony Gunter, who is the local representative out of Norfolk. And.
And we're up against the fiscal year.
A time crunch.
What's left of twenty twenty-two? Is there anything left of twenty-two and then go into twenty-three?
So Miller put a good number together, what this thing was gonna cost. People are asking me, how much is this lagoon gonna cost me? I have no idea because I've never seen anything from an engineer saying it's gonna be this, there was approximately?
Very first meeting with the approximate three.
Approximately?
Yeah, but we're not, they're not gonna know until we get, till we get to step two and three and they're not gonna give us a number. But right now, like Cheryl said, we had to pick a site so they could start the funding. Without the funding, we can't build this.
Can't build this.
But we won't know a final cost probably for.
The cost for the whole lagoon is two point, approximately two point six million, is that what we're looking?
Or like three million plus.
Uh, let me break up this tree.
Yeah.
What, what that final cost will be? Like Cheryl said, why don't we wait for it's gonna pull up?
The soil makes a difference, the adhesions to the property, all the land makes a difference. There's a lot of.
The distance from here to the lagoon makes a difference. And they're at that stage now that we pick the site where they could start nailing those numbers down and give us a more exact number. They're just starting that.
I think actually that, um, they were talking about, you know, all the fighting, all that stuff just skyrocketing and I think that some of the stuff that we saw the other day and it's like that might be leveling off a little bit. So if that, if we can get in there, you know what always happens, up, level, up, up. So, um, I don't, I don't see it ever coming back. Not gonna go back down.
Hard to say, fuel prices are coming down, so that's, that'll start coming down.
That part of it, yeah.
We'll see.
Getting worse crap.
Biggest thing, Larry, is funding, how we're gonna take it, that's the biggest emergency and that's the process we're in right now.
And, and, and just fell in there, what I have sent two Millers to work with is, um, you know, our two or three years of profit loss from that utilities fund. We've got the, the utilities, has the billings, has the serving, you know, how many people we serve, increase in households and stuff, they look at all that. The more money, the less money we have in the fund, actually the better to get the grants. Um, it, we're cut, you're always kinda caught between the devil and the deep blue sea because the more money you get, have, the better they wanna loan to you. But the less money you have, the better chance you have of the grant, so. And those grants are, see, the fiscal year for the government is July, that's July, it's June, end of June, a lot of them.
Yeah.
So as this new money comes in, if we can get this timed right and get in on some of the early money, we may be better off. We have to trust the people at Millers who know what they're doing on that and the USDA representatives. The biggest issue that I, that is what they told us was, and I think that was in that phone conversation, maybe because we talked about it briefly before. There is a mandate that says you have to do a request for proposals, which says you have to contact, you have to say, this is, we're gonna build this door, so anybody that wants to be in on this, it's open for you to come in and give us your proposal. We did that years ago. When I first came onto the board, um, Tom and I and Steve, were you on there then, Don?
I don't think so.
You hadn't come on yet and, and?
Cause I came up for Michael.
Okay, later, okay. And Michael must've been the other one then. And then Hillman was on there for a while, but I think that was later also.
Yeah.
But we, we had those, Charlie did those proposals, remember? They had put them out and they came in in big books and, um, when, when Reed was here that night, I said, well, here's your proposal. He said, you're right, because we have to prove that we put that out for proposals. So that was part of our proof. And we had the one from Kirk and Michael and I didn't find the one from Stockwell, but we had the name and we had the paperwork. And we had the original request for those proposals. So he felt like he would hit goldmine because the paperwork was still there, so he said, because otherwise they'd make us start over. And then you would have a big, long drawn out thing. So hopefully, I've got, not got the word that they've accepted that, but he was putting that together for us, okay? So hopefully that's a move forward. Okay, so then I guess what we need is a properly.
Motion.
Prove the claims.
Please, I'll make a motion.
Okay, um. Second?
I'll say it.
Second by Don and we'll start with Bob.
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
And Don.
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
Okay. Is anybody here from Economic Development? There you go.
Don, can you do it for me?
Planning and zoning. Later on in here, I just say it a couple of times, but August fifteenth is a special public hearing for rezoning. They're gonna do one and then the board will have to do another one later after they get through. And this is, they've been talking to us about that, about rezoning from this, um, down here on north, so this kinda, they say that North Side acre, cut out by the school. The cemetery, nobody's here from that, but I met with, um, I met with Bonda and somebody else on that recently and, um, they're getting everything proved well identified. We're talking about, um, that it would be nice to have some kind of a, um, guide out there so that, you know, we can locate things. So they're kinda working on that. Tree board, I'd like to, they, I'd ask Dale if they could come up with some suggestions for replacement of the trees that we lost in the park and there's some really old ones that still need to come down. So they're, I think they're working on that. So, and, and that's gonna take me right into that mixed section, if you don't mind, let me go on with my part there that has, because I'd like to talk about those trees. I think we ident, I still have to talk with Ryan, he was gonna come, he called and said he wanted to come down and talk about some of that and he never made it down. But if I remember right, we counted at least four that either came down because of the wind or had to be taken down because of the damage. The insurance is gonna pay for those. So we kinda lucked out there. I think we identified four, I think it was two here and, and two up on the hill there where the, behind Alan and Hermans on that hill, you know, there was, it was three up there. It looked like only one went down, but then if you went up and looked at it, it had landed on that other one and you could see the ground was raised and it was going over. So the only way they could come in was from the west and take that, that, and all those lines and stuff there, so we said, just take them all out of there so that they don't hit those lines. So of the three that went down up there, two of them should qualify for insurance. Then we took two here. They were here recently and, um, we're kinda looking at taking the one that's right, you know, the one that's on the end where the limb come down and hit the electric wire, that's still a danger. And then there's one that could still come down on that. So I've asked them to give us, and they, they weren't so cheap, we don't really need the estimate, but the two, for those two and then trim up in between so that we clean up that whole west side and that's done. And then that, and then, and I don't know if they had the stumps, that, you know, they may wait to grind those up with some others, but if we could get that cleaned up right away, um, and see, that's part of the plan for the, the, getting the sidewalk from the shelter to the bathroom, so if we could get that all done before that happens, then that's all ready for that.
You're not planning on doing anything before the car?
No.
Okay.
No.
Somebody has that out?
No, I, no, I, that needs to come afterwards.
Sure.
But we, we would like to get it done before winter because we'd like to get that, that sidewalk done too.
Sure.
Um, and that's waiting on Economic Development, I don't know if we'll get to go ahead on that. So that's kind of on that. I think, um, are you all, you had mentioned this before, probably advertise the land for sale on the north side?
Somebody interested in that, right?
Another one. So I've had two calls on it. We need to just advertise it, don't you think?
Yep. I agree.
And, and in fact, I need to talk, you know, if we sell something in the middle of that twenty-six, then we have to start talking about infrastructure, but those on the end, we need to see where, and both of them, I'm, both of them, I've told, we will reserve the property that it takes to go to Rogers, that's why we bought.
So you're talking about where the old cement plant, they'll, the ones to the east?
And the ones to the east. And, and planning and zoning is planning the road to be at the east end of Rogers, which would come in and then connect to some streets that they would have planned for the residential part now. So, okay, so we'll get that into an advertisement. And then while we're advertising, we got rid of the sink, um, the coke machine, as much as we love the coke machine, um, the gals came in playing pickleball and they said when they tried to put a quarter in, it was dumping money. And they were trying to drop a quarter, it'd go much money. So we're picking up all the change and we've got the door open and said, well, we don't know how to get into that to straighten that out, so we wound up shutting it off because it runs most of the time. Do you, do we want to try to get ahold of somebody antique enough to fix it or do we want to put it out and take sealed bids? Because Boomer should have that in his garage, or we could give it to Boomer since. We're going to, it, it, Boomer said, it's not me, it's Carla. She's got coke machines.
It's still gonna lose more money in electricity to keep it running.
I, I would. And if we really want a pop machine in here, let's get a newer style or something.
Do we, do we, what's a pop machine in there?
It.
Maybe it's.
Yeah, wants it and it's cheap, so like the kids, if they come in, like a family thing or something, they might buy some, but it doesn't produce a lot.
Walk down the steps.
Do what?
Walk down the steps.
Yeah, yeah. My suggestion would be like that, put out for sealed bids if nobody comes in, give it to Boomer.
Put it up sealed bids?
Is that okay? Because there's, an antique theater might want it.
I do. Yeah, we got one here. What do you hear, Tony?
I don't see a purpose.
Okay, okay. Okay.
We have, we have the key to it, right? You can get in?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And I got the last great one out for you, but it's still in the fridge right there. Okay, come to that. We have been doing a little painting in that front, the entryway and would like to do some floor fixing in there and the main street wants to fix some floor here, but I, they had, told me what all they want to do or if or whatever they wanted to, um, see if Mary Anne could come down and do some, maybe. They wanted to see if Mary Ann could come down and do some maybe, so I don't know what they've got in mind. Okay, so then the last thing, and I, this is, maybe we could put this into the street thing either way. So I'm gonna just throw it in here because we're going right on into that anyway. And then you can think about this. There's three things that our street superintendent is supposed to help us. There are three things we have to do at this stage. One is a lane mile report, which says there's how many lanes of streets and/or highways or roads or whatever you call it. Doesn't matter if they're gravel, you know, highway, whatever they are. And a lane is wide enough to get a car through. So this is a two lane report, okay? So the first thing that goes in is a lane mile report. So that's what, part of what they base on. The next thing that goes in is the one to six plan. And that's about fixing them. And then there's the annual certification that says that we have a street superintendent and that helps us get that thousand dollars to pay them. And that's, that's what they charge us. So, so there's those three reports. Well, Steve called me a while back and said, and, and you might look at these two, go with that other thing, that, this one. Steve sent this out and said, I'm sending this out because that marks kind of what we talked about. I said, well, so I wasn't following him very well. But then, then he sent these. And if you take a look at these, these are the one and six. So there's, but there's work on that, on the, the one year and the six year has a whole bunch of them. And then Dave called me, he said this one. And this has just one all by itself and he recommended that we do this normal maintenance. Well, that makes sense because the year's over anyway. So, so then in the next year, then it would only be that major one. And that's, so I said, so then he marked it on there and then he's got this marked. So he said, well, I said, well, we didn't get the lane mile report that I know of. Did you get it? No, I didn't get it. He said, that has to go to your clerk. I said, okay, so we've had in and out of here, so, no, that has to go to Arlene. Well, Arlene, so then he called him, he said, Arlene's not registered. Arlene and I said, she's been doing it for two, three years now, I don't know why she wouldn't be registered. So right after they told her she wasn't registered, they sent the next report out to her as a registered clerk. So something's going on at the state. So I have to get a hold of Steve again to find out if we, or I'll just, the people who sent this out, maybe just call them and see what's going on with it. I do want you to note though, that I, and we'll, I'll back off and let Chief Carter have the floor for his part of that thing. But I decided to do this at this point because I'm recommending that we reconsider the work that was proposed by H and H, is it?
H and L.
H and L, that would do those streets. Because for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, we use some of the money that we need to use. We have six to eight blocks of work done. I went to Coolridge the other day and those streets look really nice. They did two blocks of Main Street and they're, they're just nice. I talked to one of the guys that used to be on board and he said, you know, we picked the streets. And I said, does he just come in and decide that we picked the streets? And then he comes in every year and so forth, whatever. I'm all for engineers, but I'm, you know, when something needs engineered, but when you have someone with thirty and forty years' experience to fix something and they, they know what they're doing and you pay the engineer half of what you're paying them to come up with an idea that they already know, I think it's a waste of money, but that's, that's me. So with that in mind, my suggestion is let's get him in here because I talked to him the other day and he'll still come. We could get some of that done. The guys can go ahead and fill potholes, and then fill in potholes where they can. But that would give us some, some nice streets. And then, and one of the reasons I picked those, because it's not Main Street. It's like, it's not that concrete. So if we go down there on that off street, if he can make those look, if he can make those work, where they come high and low and so forth, and those are bad intersections. If he can get that done, we got a goldmine. So, just a thought. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there. I think I've cut it all that I wanted to. And Chief Carter, did you have something? Oh. Yeah, there's one other thing, the pickup has the air conditioners out.
The white one or the blue?
The, the white. That, we got an estimate from Pearson that Hardington was nine hundred to nine fifty and from Michael's fourteen hundred. So there's, those two bits. So you think about that for a little bit and then we can come back to that again if you want to. If you wanna fix it, if you wanna trade pickups, if you wanna do what?
How many miles on that pickup?
We don't need to trade it out.
I don't remember, eighty, eighty something, it's less than ninety. But not far from ninety.
Everything, and we just put?
The compressors out of it or what? This leaking?
The condensers out of it. The part that goes in front of the radiator, that's leaking.
How many miles did it have on when you bought it?
Hmm, I don't, I'd have to look that up, I don't remember. We put approximately fifteen thousand miles on it, if my memory serves me right. Fifteen to sixteen thousand?
A year.
Two thousand fifteen?
A year.
Year.
A year.
Oh, no, no, they, oh, I thought you asked what year the pickup was.
No, no, you want to have any years, how many miles on it a year? Fifteen thousand?
Oh, no, 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 it's, that's total miles since we purchased it.
That's probably three years ago, isn't it? Probably five, six thousand a year.
Yeah, it's, it's around, yeah, six, it's, I think it's around six a year average.
That, that's a half number to report. I think, I think there's gonna be a hangout, I mean.
Give it some thought and comparison.
Okay.
Chief, do you wanna say something?
Well, the report that I have is from the car incident activity. I printed a couple of pages out for the council. But it, this monkey's a little better than, than when I first got here. Seems like that now that the word is out, that it's gonna settle down just a little bit. But, so there's the, the call activity. The, the citizen assist was new, but people coming after things. We, I do vet inspections because I'm vet certified, like the deputies are, that's courtesy bar. People that they don't have to drive all the way. We'll have a deputy come out here sometime if it's more convenient, faster for. Need to go vet inspection, obviously, with, if they're, I'm vet certified. And the, the ordinance violations that were five. Now, I took pictures of some places that the yards are just bad. And they got junk vehicles in it. But now under the city ordinance, one of my issues is, is that we have to be careful about going on people's property because as a law enforcement officer, if, if, if I go on a person's property, if I know that there's a vehicle in the garage, everything that I see must be, the violation must be seen from the street. As, as a, you know, if, if we had a code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer is not, is not law enforcement certified. That person can go up on a property, he can observe a violation, he can write a citation, you know, he can write a, a letter. He can issue a city citation. But I, because I'm a, a sworn law enforcement officer, I can't go on a person's private property without, once they invite, see a law violation for, I haven't warned. So it's different. So I, I know a lot of smaller towns do a combination of a police officer plus the ordinance officer. Well, if I'm chasing a dog, there's one thing, fifty dollars, lose a property. But that does have, legally it does have, have this limitation, and then your city attorney can't sue you. So I'm, I'm kind of limited in what I can do. But if I see the violations on the street, the junk and abandoned vehicles, I, I can write a citation. If I see like these violations, I see them from the street, I can send a letter, give them time to fix it. If they don't, then the city attorney can issue a citation. And if they don't pay it, then, you know, they can go to court. So that's what it's like. If we can want to keep the city looking as good as it looks right now. But, but it isn't bad. What we knew is that if people have prescription drugs, they determine to us and we'll eventually take them to a pharmacy to get, get that done. There was a citizen assist for fuel exhaustion. The St. Rose has a Good Samaritan Fund, they ask us if we can take that over because when school starts, they don't want people coming to them. When they get the students over, they're not gonna go to ask for help. They're running gas, you need some food or something. And it's usually done by law enforcement agencies in small departments, in smaller communities because if a person's just trying to hustle money or prevent fraud, they're less likely to come ask us for their help or gas or whatever, if it's, if it's not real. And then only other things that are suspicious activity has gone up just a little bit just because of the, of the time of year when that happens. So the, the latest one is that, you know, there was a camera found in the, in the motel room. That somebody's been watching people as they go into the motel. So I, I went and I did, I did contact the person who was responsible. I was able to find out who was responsible and there's an investigation right now. And I'm gonna work with, with NSP to get that all resolved. But I'll put out and work with people that if you go in a room, they need to really look at the room to make sure that they're not hitting cameras. Next camera was no bigger than the, in the disney.
And in the room?
Yes, they, they had a painted curtain, consol, panel pointed towards the bed on the alligator.
And remote control.
Yeah, and then that camera was in there from July, the nineteenth, all went into twenty-nine. But I contacted all the people that were in the room to let them know that if somebody called them to try to, like, or, or say something or threaten them with something, then let them know. Cause we already know about it, so it's not like they have to.
But we don't, we put the camera in there.
I've, oh.
We have a world camera.
I've been doing this thirty years.
Says there's a new sheriff in town.
Wow.
What does it say about having more than one family living in a single dwelling house?
Well, do you have ordinance on it though? See, because, because that's, cause there's, there's some state law, but what prevail over that is you have a local ordinance. And so if, if, you know, if you have a ordinance that's more restrictive than what the state has, but not more lenient, whatever your city ordinance says, whatever the city attorney writes that, that's what governs. And you don't, you know, if, if, if a family is living in a one or two bedroom house, but you know, it's a bunch of them in there and that causes issues, you know, with trash or whatever, noise, whatever, you can write an ordinance.
I'm talking to different families living in one house.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm talking about. You know, you, you have multiple families in one house. But in order for me to enforce it, there has to be an ordinance for different families living in one house. There has to be some type of re-creation. And then the only other thing is that I have, as far as the, the applicants for the SRO, the school resource officer, I printed out some information, what that is, is I think some people have a misunderstanding about what that is. A school resource officer is not because the kids are bad. The school resource officer is there because that person provides a mentorship and other things for kids to become more friendly with law enforcement. And also it's a way to recruit, you know, kids later on down in the years that, because they knew a law enforcement officer. There had been some interest, but there were act, there has been actually no applicants as of this day. But when I was here last time, I spoke about the vehicles and we can probably get some from ERMO and from other places for between the two fifty and the seven hundred and a thousand dollars. But now that vehicles are so expensive, I mean, everybody's got this crazy amount that they want for vehicles, that's really no longer applicable at that price. Even some of the vehicles that I found, they had, you know, eighty, some over a hundred thousand miles and people were still wanting, you know, several thousand dollars for them. So I contacted the Nebraska Enterprise Fund and they agreed that, you know, I explained to them what our situation was. So they're gonna let us know this week, but they have pre-approved us to get twenty-five thousand dollars for a vehicle. So they'll pay twenty-five thousand dollars for one vehicle. And until we get some other funding through, we just have to show that we applied for it, you know, that's how they can help us. And then I asked them for some more money than fifty-five thousand to pay that school resource officer because we missed that grant window initially, so it's a little tougher to get that money down. But the prime permission and PSAP is meeting this week. So Don Art contacted me last week and said that they'll meet this week on that funding. But Nebraska Enterprise Fund also said that they would be very interested in paying that fifty-five thousand dollars for our school resource officer for the first year. So they're gonna let me know this week if that will get funded here before the end of this month in August for the fifty-five thousand for the SRO and for the twenty-five thousand dollars this week.
So you got this, I'll call the police officer that's gonna be in the school, correct?
Right.
What do they do in the three months we don't have?
They are a street officer. They, they, they're, because they are regularly commissioned street officers. The only difference is that they're assigned in school. When they're not in school on weekends, because that person will be working opposite of me on weekends, so we'll rotate. So when I'm not working, they're working. If I'm off or if I leave town, they're working. If school is out during the summertime, they are a Crawford police officer, job or off totally.
So you're looking at yourself and two other officers, correct?
Well, I'm looking at myself as one officer now, a school resource officer. But eventually, you know, with, with that funding comes in, we will have funding for a third officer.
Have you talked to the, the schools and asked them what their thoughts on having an officer out there?
Not, not all, I, I've talked to the superintendent briefly and I've talked to the principal briefly. They thought that it was a great idea, but we've had no end up conversation. I went to St. Rose and I talked with Father Andy and I talked to the pastor who was there last week. Also, he came down. And I talked to the administrator and the principal that's over there. They think that it's a good idea as well. They want a little more information about it, but I printed that out, but I still have to get to the school. Now that school is, is in. I went to talk to the superintendent and principal last week, but they were at some kind of conference. They were gone all week. So I will be with them here sooner than later and talk with them, talk with them about the school resource officer. Because the school resource officer is not intended to be someone, because they should, it's to prevent bad things from happening. You know, you have a person there that provides mentors, that, you have kids tell police things when they feel that there's a report. It can be very, very positive. And then there's scholarship programs that can come to the SRO program. There's other funding that can come because we have a SRO in the school. It can be very, very positive. So one, and this is one of the reasons that I want to do it, because it kills that nigger stereotype. It's a stereotype to have a SRO in a school is a bad thing because bad things come on all in the school. That is not true.
So how do you do that, how do they do that when you got three different locations for three schools?
Well, he'll, he'll, he'll rotate, you know, so the, so the, so the SRO will talk to the school administrator. And, because one of the things with the SRO, he'll do a DARE program. And the DARE program is pretty much geared for the elementary school kids. So he'll get on a DARE program back, we should have a DARE program anyway. Most of the things that, that I hear and I'll get here on what's going on and, and, cause in my office right now, I have bongs, marijuana grinders, marijuana residue, marijuana pipes. I've got vapes, I've got other little things that kids have brought me. In my office, in the last week, right now, that was a teenager that gave me that stuff. See, an adult hasn't given me a thing.
I would look.
Teenagers are giving me that stuff, not adults. Now, adults talk about suspicious activity, but the ones that come forward and say, hey, look at what I found. But guess where I got this from? The teenagers, and that's what I want. And that comes from building a report where I don't, they, they have to know that they can trust you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here. This is where we can put a paper like this. So the community knows, but outside of?
Can, can that go to the community?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything that's here.
Right. You brought the important of those.
Sure.
Sure.
I do run monthly police reports in other communities, so if you'd like to do that, I'm happy to do. That's okay, John?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That's the Knox County. Okay, so, thank you. And the unfinished business, the sewers on there, we're gonna skip that because it's again down below. Um, I need to tell you too that our lawyer will be here. He said he'd be here, but he's got a meeting first, so he'd be late. So he said if we put that last, so anything he needs to be, he needs to be here for that. So um, let's see what else we need to do. Um, um, there's that parts equipment. Patrick had talked to you at one time about the possibility of getting a trailer to haul those mowers. Either way, wherever that maboom goes, we're gonna get mowers to it and it's easier to haul them and it's to, to uh road them that far probably. Besides any of the other stuff. And our trailer is about shot.
What kind of price?
The, the cars I know that's still there, wasn't it? Nine grand, was it?
The one trailer that was a tilt bed was ninety two hundred and that was large enough to haul our skid loader as well. If we would need to do some dirt work out there with a skid loader. There is a cheaper trailer I found down in Osmond for fifty five hundred that would be heavy enough to haul two lawn mowers. It wa, that, it was, it was about fifty five hundred dollars, but it would not be heavy enough to transport a skid loader. So some options. I, I didn't look into it anymore. Uh, but Yankton Trailers a week ago did still have that tilt bed trailer for ninety two hundred. And our, just the trailer that we do have, we can barely get our mowers on it, just barely. And the, the main frame needs some welding and the heat in the last two weeks has uh caused one of the tires to go bad. And I have not had a chance to see if we can get used tires to put on it. I'm kinda waiting for, to see what you guys would like to do for this evening. So that trailer can hold one mower. And, and if it's wet, we can't load the mowers at all. The, the, there's not enough traction to get the, and the trailer is so tight, there's no room for air.
Well, it seems to me like, you know, we're a little better off to, to have a little more and it'll just bear. And, and that's not a bad price for, from what we looked around. That's for, for the amenities it has.
Use the motion.
Or just say, yeah.
If we get more than, if we're having somebody give us a price, we have two minutes or we just gonna go with one guy?
He's already looked at.
He's got two minutes right now.
Right. We gotta see the estimate service if we're gonna do it before we do anything.
You, you already, you already have them.
Yeah.
From, they've, they've been, you've gotten them in past meetings. It's not there tonight, but you've had, you've, that information was presented to you in past meetings.
When we were first talking about.
When we first got the mowers, we presented that.
Yeah, we'll take.
I'm gonna make a motion to get the big trailer. We, we need a trailer. We can't ride this mower and send it back and forth to this park.
Is uh.
Cost effective.
Concerns it? What's that? How heavy is that trailer? Is it heavier than what the capacity of the pickup is? I mean, are we predestined that? What the, how the trailer that massive, is our pickup being, gonna be able to?
Can we have time to pull that skid loader?
Yes. You, you couldn't load the skid loader on the front of the trailer. But if you, if you load the, you get the tongue weight ratio right over the axles, it'll pull it. And, and we're not talking going from here to a C city either. We're, you know, we're just talking five miles potentially. And, and if we do something different with the pickup, I would definitely look into a heavier pickup at that point. But the pickup we have would move our mowers.
Yeah.
And, and occasionally we would have to take a skid loader somewhere.
Then we have a chance to.
If we, we would be able to have that opportunity to do it. And then this road mix that we're, we're buying, we can get two pallets on a truck without having to restack the pallets with the tailgate off. This trailer would allow us, if we wanted to buy three or four pallets at a time, we would be able to haul mu- multiple pallets on this trailer and still get them off with a forklift.
Anybody in the trailer in the long run? Makes us more efficient. I'm gonna make a motion to buy the, from uh Yankton Trailer, right?
Yankton, Yankton Trailers has the tilt bed.
And it's in that whatever nine to ten, you know, time to get everything in there. We're right in there ninety two whatever. We will give a damn. Okay, a motion by James.
I'll second.
Second by Don to buy the tilt bed trailer at Yankton Trailers. Okay, let's start with Larry.
No.
Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay, then in that same thing, we talked about the pickup a little bit. Is there anything else? Did you want a decision on whether to fix the tear or? What to do there? This weather out here is gonna be hard on our guys, not that we're.
I'm running under my finger, finger there right now. I'll sleep down.
I, I'm believe we should prepare their condition.
Yeah.
Pearson has.
She'll go to Pearson where they're.
Like five dollars cheaper.
Right.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make sure they're doing the labor and the material for that.
Would you please just?
Because it seems.
Seems a little off.
Yeah, but, but when I talked to them, I was under the understanding that was labor and material.
Okay, double check.
So why don't we have him just double check? Go ahead and do the cheapest when you can approve the bill when it comes in.
So did you, you have a written document from Pearson or just out of verbal on?
It, it's just a verbal from both shops.
Can we, I wanna make sure we're doing the apples to apples here.
Do, do the motion to get, get the written, fix it and go with the cheapest one or get it. Cause we don't wanna wait a month.
No, I don't wanna wait a month. I don't wanna wait a, a day. But my concern is that it likes fifty dollars more than now.
Okay, that's it.
You know, we'd have trouble with a number.
Sure. Well, let's get some numbers. We can give it out to, or you can email and, and tell you what we think.
I'll make a motion to fix air conditioning after we see the price, the hard price. Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
You get them back? Make sure they're doing the same.
Yeah, I wanted to see.
Same stuff has gotta get done. Nobody's adding some crap, you know?
Correct. Well, have them put everything in the pricing, you know, give it a hard copy, give it to us, please. That makes sense?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by James, seconded by Bob. So we're gonna start with Don.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Larry? And then on the end of that little, see that thing there? There's that sprayer. If we, the guys have an old broken down sprayer, if I understand that they may do it and it's not a thing that you can get a decent one that will load on to something and they can do parks and they can do cracks in sidewalk and they can be ten times more effective. That's what they tried to sell me on anyway. So do you wanna talk to them about that?
Yeah, we have a, a sprayer that's a tow behind. It's basically like a big farm leaving. But only its miniature was given to us by the golf cars. The pump locks up on it. So uh, I know Bob and James have seen it. It was in the top shed. Uh, it's got a gas engine and a pump on it and it locks up. So my proposal would be if we wanna save money, we would need to buy a hundred and fifty dollar pump from Baumgar's. And we'd have to repair it and make sure the, the one tire that's flat and doesn't turn is operable and we can salvage that. I, I did happen to look at Baumgar's this last weekend when I was there. And for that nine hundred dollar range, we could buy something new set up electrically in about that same capacity to, to, just to give you some information.
That's a fifteen or thirty gallon or what it feels.
It's actually bigger than that. I don't remember. It's, I can't remember how many gallons they were, but it was, it was, it was, it was larger than fifty gallon. I wanna say they were sixty or seventy.
I'm just gonna say, well, Bob and I went through the maintenance building. I was very appalled about some of the equipment that we have that we're using.
Yep.
A tire, I mean, this car shouldn't be spending a dollar to save a dime. And that's what we've been doing for a long while.
Is it something that's worth investigating again? We can get a paper?
Yep.
Data on what we have?
Yep, yep. I mean, how far, all four are getting a, getting the right equipment.
Then do you, can you jump on down then to that other one and do you want to look at tools and equipment?
Well.
Worth a shop and make a list of what?
Well, we talked to him about that. He should not be using his own tools.
Nope.
So we talked, had about getting the list of the things he has.
And he's got the list, but.
He needs to take home and we need to invest in that.
Do you wanna set a price investment li- list or do you wanna, you know, this, it's kinda hard to get anything done if you bring each item in here at a different.
Can you give us a list of what he's using that's his, that he should be using and what it costs to get new?
Well, or he's got it, yeah. It's insured for what? Fifty grand?
Yes.
What's that?
He's estimated that we're using fifty thousand dollars worth of his tools that's on our insurance. But what I'm saying is, you know, how, can, can we just start?
Buying?
Buying a list of.
I think we have approval on that though, wouldn't we?
We can, but we can, we can bring those to you to prove the bill.
So what kind of tools are we looking at? Is mechanic tools, specialized tools?
Right, right now I've, I've got a garage creeper, jack stands, high lift jack, chop saw, uh, wire feed welder. Hmm, most of what, welding gloves, helmet, that stuff is mostly mine. And then I've got my tools, my, my mechanic tool set is there. Uh, and I, there's a lot of stuff in there. I've got a list of what that is.
I understand you can buy a hundred thousand dollar worth of tools and still have to get some more. But, you know, if we can get by to the basics, cause every year Baumgar's has a big sale at that farm show and every farmer goes and buys tools because it's on sale.
Well, I'm, I'm asking what I can do, what you guys want me to do is, I, I mean, there's, that, that welder. I think I've used it for my own personal use for five minutes. And I've put five rolls of wire through it since I bought it and it went from the store right into the shop. So on that one, I would ask the board if I could buy a new welder and the welder itself is a eight hundred dollar. If I, I'd have to compare model numbers, but if I got the right one, it was an eight hundred dollar welder off the shelf at Baumgar's because I bought it and, and it hasn't done any welding for me. So if we can, but, but, but I, but I garage creeper, jack stands, you know, that stuff that we use.
Can we volunteer to get a working committee to sit down and look at the list and then present then to the rest of the council while we're being, cause I'm, I'm gonna say Mr. Pis obviously is a construction expert. I've been turning wrenches and working on cars since I was able to crawl. So two of us, and I'm not speaking for Mr. Pis, but we can sit down as a working committee and work with Patrick and go through the list and prioritize things so we can come up with some estimated costs. So we can give us a hard copy of the numbers of what things are priority.
Put that together, give us a list and what if we have to replace them?
Yeah, and, and I'm, and I'm not asking the board to replace what I have.
No.
I'm trying to come up, I've started a list of, of what I think this, we would help a city to have.
Yeah, and I, I like, I agree with Larry and they have the big farm show and you can get pretty good deals over there if we can, if we could.
We gotta do some shopping.
Yeah.
We need a list and then. Everything is skyrocketing like the police chase that, it's up there now.
Let's expedite this.
There's, there's also.
Probably just a liability problem. It's a, it's, you know, one of Pat's tools and then he gets hurt by it.
That's why we put them on insurance. They are, that, that's, that's on the arm insurance coverage.
There is a Nebraska website that we bought the gravel truck from that has toolboxes and tools. But it takes a trip to Lincoln. I, I haven't called them. I could probably call them and try and nail them down. They have toolboxes sometimes for two hundred and fifty dollars that are full. But you don't know what you're getting. So it would take somebody to go down there and take a look at what they have available to see how much for that two hundred and fifty that we could, you know, replace. Sometimes the boxes are empty. And they've got boxes of wrenches where we can put together a wrench set for what? Two dollars, five dollars of a wrench.
You know, entertain Mr. Stefan to kind of give us some guidance on, he does a lot of mechanic stuff. He uses a lot of different tools.
Well.
Maybe give him a shot to give us a, an idea of what we, what's good and what's not good.
Well, Patrick is also very well versed in his tools and.
I've been at this for sixty years and right now you can go across the street. You can go to John Yern Yankton and you can buy a toolbox that fits in the back of a pickup. We have one out at the shop that we have a pallet underneath of it and it's got about every tool in it that you need to do the average thing even out in the country. Now, if you bought something like that, you could use it up there. If you all once need it, go to your sewer plant, you could load it up and go there.
What does it cost you?
I don't know, but you can ask them. They got, my boy Bobby's got one in his pickup and it gets lowered probably three times a week with a pallet for it goes in the back and he goes off the country.
Let's, let's start with a list.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, you can tell me no one we're on.
Yeah. Okay, any jar got started over there, but.
No.
But he can find, you know, keep that. Okay, so I'm gonna take out, right now I think we're at the, talk about the sewer and we've been waiting just for you. I'm just kidding. We're just finishing up the rest of it. But before we go there, we have three people here that need to take the oath of, um, the oath of the city. So I'm gonna ask the Andersons to come up and Unique's gonna be here and they're gonna read the oath of office together, whatever they wanna do it. And for those of you who, anybody here who does, are not familiar with these people, the Andersons have been here for a while, so most of you probably know them. Unique is our chief of places, wife, and she's gonna be our new clerk, flash, treasurer, whatever. And so we're looking forward to this, okay? Yeah, go, yeah. Can switch your name and say.
I shall, Anderson. I am Carter. I solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska. If following means war and domestic, then I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same that I take this obligation for the duty of self-defense and protection for what we're, we're presenting. For what a perfect relationship and that I will faithfully and personally go forth on the duties of the Constitution. According to the law, to the justice of my ability. I swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of the equal party organization that advocates the overall rule of the government of the United States for, of the state of my quarters, for my. And next such time, as I am an assistant, I will not advocate or become a member of an equal party organization that advocates the overall rule of the United States for state, by, or by.
Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations to all of you. We're gonna enjoy having you here and you'll have to fill them out, sign them and they have to stay on file, okay? I'm learning, let's go. So with all that said and done, um. I have to tell you, Dustin was on a ladder up today. Will came through and he said, hmm. Glad to see you're on the stick there, making it look like you're doing something when you're not. You gotta remember, know that he was in one of Will's first classes, he helped build the house out there. So he got, he got welcomed royally by a little bit of Razzmatazz, looking like he's busy. I thought it was kind of cute. He does stay busy. I'm gonna take just a minute and say that I am impressed with all three of these people. Unique came in today and started organizing. She's interested. She's on the stick. Shelley is always willing to do anything we ask her to and Dustin is just right there, right? So Patrick, if you know Dustin's job, happy with our new officer. We're gonna mess Arlene as she goes in and out, but she'll be back before two, before we know it. So on our way. Appreciate each and every one of you. Um, okay, so the next step in the sewer, basically. We talked just briefly about this, about the fact that, um, that the next step is is kind of in progress because we had the call. Reed Miller called the conference, called with USDA and Bob and James and I were on on that phone and basically that's what they're working on now, getting by. Dale's in the audience, um, came in today, called me last night and came in today and I I don't know where you're at at this point, but, um. That second option that we have is your property and did you, where were you at that day or did you go get a, um, notarized or what did you do?
Okay, I had a concern on the exercise of the purchase option. By the planning time of the year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. If the city did not exercise the purchase option. Can the construction of the Lagoon project begin while the crop is in the field? If so, who pays for the crop if it is destroyed?
I can answer that question for you. As I, as I mentioned before, you know, obviously the city has to be making a decision, in my opinion, the next thirty to sixty days max as to which piece of property that they're going to choose. Because of this construction timetable that the state of Nebraska has placed upon them. So the standpoint of worrying about twenty-three or twenty-four. To me, that's somewhat of a moot question, but it's, you know, since you've asked the question, you know, the contract that was sent to your attorney to have them review. Section, paragraph eleven and subsection B specifically says buyer will reimburse the seller for any damage that it caused during the investigation of the lagoon site. Drilling of any test holes or any other activity directly or indirectly related to the construction of the lagoons by the buyer. I think that covers that. So, you know, I mean, obviously if they buy the property, you know, it's a moot question. I think it's gonna be a moot question anyway, just because I don't think the city can wait till twenty-three, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four. They have to have the construction part of it going around by December first and so, uh, they're gonna make a decision that short period.
I mean, I I understand, you don't know whether funding will be available by then or not. Is it, my understanding is.
I don't think it's a matter of.
My question is, do you plant that crop or not? I mean, will there be a verbal or written notice ahead of time? Prior to the planting season and what if that crop is planted? Who's responsible for it? Because what if they exercise the option in June and that crop is in the field? Then how do we handle that? And they decide they're gonna do construction two months later and the crop is still standing in the field?
I think you'd handle it the same way you do any other crop, uh, situation with crop insurance. You make a determination of what the value is. They do that all the time, whether it's wind, hail. You know, whatever, whatever it might be. And and, you know, the timetable that the state of Nebraska gave the city is not based upon whether they get funding or not. I mean, so if you think that that's a precondition or contingency, uh, they have a timetable, they're gonna do this, 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 this and this. And so they're on a short leash right now. And so, you know, I think the contract is pretty clear as to, you know, they would have to be responsible for any damages during those incidences that are specifically set forth out of subsection B and paragraph eleven.
There's no statute of limitations on that. We're responsible for whenever, if we ever were there, for whatever damage we do.
Well, yeah, unless you buy the property. I mean, if you don't buy it.
It won't even go into twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. It's gonna happen real short, real short. And I make a decision, if you sign it and run some test holes, maybe a week property. If the soil looks good, then the board has to make a decision where they're gonna go. That's the bottom line right there. Because it ain't gonna happen, we ain't gonna sit on this until May of twenty twenty-three and they've got to sit there and think about planting. We're gonna have this all pretty well done among them for that.
Well, you've got to have, if you've checked, you know, the test holes drilled and that may take seven to ten days if they can do it quickly. So then you're already in the middle of August.
Yep.
And then the next board meeting, you guys have got to pull the trigger, in my opinion. So, I mean, I don't see this as a thing where twenty-three, twenty-four.
Hey, they're gonna draw a picture to us.
If you guys haven't made a decision by then, it's not gonna be good.
Nope.
Yep.
It's not gonna be good. So either.
We're gonna know, go in very long.
We have to know until you're gonna sign it because then we can move on, yeah, and get it done. That's all there's to it.
If you don't sign it, then they really have one option left. I mean, you know, and I'm not trying to force you, Mr. Gethin, to make a, you know, having to do something. I'm just telling the board as it is. You don't have time. You either sign it or you don't sign it.
That's it, right? We'll cover, we'll cover anything that we damaged on your, on your premises while we're building it. Like you said, crop insurance works the same way, payout and anything, but we'll have to pay for what we damaged on your property. Okay?
I guess what I would like to know at this point then is if he signs it and hasn't arrived, is the board willing me to sign it also?
Or you'd have to, the board'd have to vote.
Have to vote on that.
Vote on the contract. Because the contract isn't effective. The procedure is this, he's got to sign it. And then you, he brings it to the board and then the board decides whether or not you're gonna accept it. And if you get, if the board accepts it, then you can sign it.
That's what I told you.
But you can't, you can't do it the other way around.
And and just, I think, I don't know if this happens any and maybe I'm seeing it wrong, but in their work talks about any damage done in the drilling and so forth, it's gonna be paid for. But as far as like the actual building of the lagoon and damaging the crops. If, once that dirt samples are taken and once that one is disqualified, because remember, that's the first one. So if that gets disqualified and you come to your property, then we will buy that property before the construction ever begins. We're not gonna construct on your property. So then it doesn't matter whether the crops are there or not because we're already petting off the ground. See what I'm saying? And and, you know, like, and and that's gonna be decided soon because that has to be done by twenty-three. You're talking about your twenty-three crops and that has to be finished by the time we will be harvesting your twenty-three crop. So there's no way we're gonna come in and start building in June of July because it should be almost done. Okay? So if that happens. And quite frankly, I'm assuming that if all the soil samples and everything goes well, I guess it won't even be sampled. But that's our second option.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I've got one that's blank day of August.
We don't have an order.
Who's an order recorder?
You're not, he can still do an option without an order.
You can?
Just as you have to have a signed contract. I always put one out there just to hope that we had something, but if not, I mean, I'm in Norbury in South Dakota, but I.
If.
Are you wanting to sign it tonight, Dale, or not? You don't know yet? Here's where, here's where we are. If you sign it tonight and everybody know, you know, is in agreement, then the board can vote to accept that contract, am I right?
Yes.
And then I can go ahead and sign it. You don't have to have it notarized, okay? But if you want more time to think about it, then you're gonna have to get it signed and notarized, bring it in and then we'll have to have another meeting. There's no hurry as long as we're working out there, but if you want that as a second option, you're gonna have to make that decision.
When you get the ground samples, we have to have your signature on paper.
Yeah, we probably won't do those, of course, until we get those together. If you want more time to think, man, you do it. Because you don't want to ever feel like that you got talked into something you didn't want to do. It's the right guy.
Well, I mean, I just say this, Mr. Gethin, nothing's gonna change on this agreement, okay? So, I mean, there's gonna be any words changed. We've changed how many times? Four, five times? And it's a waste of time. The council, quite frankly, have a special meeting where nothing's gonna change. So, you know, if you don't want to sign it, nobody's, nobody's feeling bad about that, okay? I mean, they're not gonna hold it against you. But, you know, this is what the second meeting we've had on this thing and, uh, you know, you've had your attorney look at it and, uh, you know, we've reversed with that. And so, uh, you know, from the board's standpoint, you know, I guess I would encourage you to, if he isn't gonna sign it, then you gotta go on to the other alternative. Because you just, I just don't think you got the time.
We don't.
You know, you, you gotta drill those holes, even if he does sign it and you're, you're running tight, tight rope. Then you gotta get it drilled in September. You're already, it won't be into September. So.
Well, and I feel for some of you who should maybe spend money to get soil samples unless that's how theirs turned out.
Well, that's another day for another discussion.
Well, I mean, that's what the book was.
So if you're not willing to do that, then we're gonna go home.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, before I do that, I'd like to, uh, hire H and L to do the street.
Oh, okay, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn. Hire H and L.
Don makes a motion to hire H and L to come back and do that street, but, okay, do that second.
Now, now, wait a minute, sir. What, what are they going to do?
From the, from the elevator to Chad Pot's house, all of Wyoming Street.
I understand where they're going.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, what process are they going to do on our roads? Are they gonna take some down or are they just putting it over the top?
They're going to mill where they need to mill. The Wyoming Street is so bad, they don't need to melt. There's nothing left to melt.
Can, can we, can we have that gentleman come to a board meeting?
We need to get him going. I'm letting, we need to get it going or we're gonna be out of time here.
Well.
I I could have him come up and talk to you if that makes you feel better.
Contract reads he will mill three inches at the curb, up two inch at eight foot, that's the width of his machine. He will fix any bad spots that he milled and filled before he would lay any hot mix over that. So the the curb would be three inches, eight feet in, it would be one inch of hot mix. He would come in and he, because the, he looked at the roads and he said, the centers of the roads are good and they're solid. So if if we milled out the port, uh, areas which is on the sides, I would fill that with that material from three inches to an inch. And then you would need to seal that. And he has the new polymers that you put the rock into. It's not the old MC eight hundred like what we've been using on the streets. And if he does not do it once, he does it twice. And that's what his contract reads. So that's what he would be doing.
For one thing.
To answer your question.
Board members, we have not seen a contract of how he's gonna do it from him. This is all talk over the phone. Next thing is, what is he gonna do with Second Street? When I can put tar on Second Street, I hope you board members are gonna have to think about this. This one right here, you know, we had a bit of putting concrete back in there, cutting out what we have to. And it just seems to die because we need to get done. We got money, we got to do it and that's part of the street right there. We keep waiting and waiting. We're gonna wait until next winter, next spring.
But this includes part, his, his contract, his bid includes that.
What's the end of pour concrete? I don't want to see, I don't want to see asphalt poured over concrete. I really don't.
But we're not talking about the street at all.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, we are.
He's got, he's gonna seal.
Something we don't have.
This region.
You don't have a copy. It's been in the past months with your pass.
You shave that off and put all the rest on my pad. If you stop bringing that.
If you look in your package, it's in your packet that you've got new pass.
And then you can dump that again, like, but that. It makes no sense. I'll take it all up because there's nothing wrong with it.
Everybody talks about it.
I thought it was a street board. He said, why, I didn't know that.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for putting asphalt over the concrete.
Nobody's putting asphalt over that.
You just told me they were.
No, I did not. I said he was there to fix it. I didn't say he's gonna put asphalt over it.
I actually.
You're fixing pour concrete.
Maybe he's gonna cut those off.
Well, there's, there's an in-between there where you actually cut the broken jagged edges of the concrete. And fill that with the polymer that holds that and then put the patchwork inside, which you don't have to cut. Everything out and take the rebar and everything.
How much concrete did you pour, Cheryl?
How many roads did you belt, correct?
I put a lot of sidewalks and driveways.
That's not a street.
I have.
I never, and I never said I did.
Jim, have you seen?
I don't think, I don't see the Second Street part of this. Unless it's maybe something, I don't, I might have missed. It's all right with me if he doesn't step Second Street in.
That's fine. But but you leaving that open for the winter is not good, I guess. And he wouldn't be doing anything to keep it, he's washing the ice. And it wouldn't be anything if they decided to cut it out and they'd be getting that. Remember that price and seal.
I would like to talk and add, Mr. Doyle Stevens, come, he pours a lot of dry, it's in a lot of streets. That's who I ask to think about coming, talking to the board. And I would like to have this agent on, what is he, come in here and tell us the same thing.
Let's leave Second Street out and move ahead. Let's leave Second Street out and move ahead with the streets to get. And we can judge from the job he does what we want to do from there. Would you adjust your motion, Don, to leave Second Street out?
I'll make a motion to hire H. L. to do all the streets that they wanted to expect for Second Street.
Just the ones that they, you talked about.
Not Harold Street, or not Harold, Fifth Street.
Fifth Street and what?
And the repairs on some of the others.
So... So, guys, what are we gonna do? I mean, we got manholes, are we gonna cut that down, or are they gonna keep adding over the top? That's my question. Yep, they done, they put concrete around manhole, that was great, but now we're gonna be, you know, are they just gonna lay the top over the thing, put another sleeve on there? They haven't told us what they're gonna do there yet.
Well...
How wide is this street? The end of this?
How wide is Ten Street, six foot?
Depends, twenty-five, twenty-five feet, approximately.
Okay, so if we're just going eight foot in each way, we'll never deal with the manhole anyway, right?
These guys are professionals, they deal with manholes all the time.
Like, we won't have an issue with the manhole if we're going to...
You're not gonna have an issue with the manhole.
You just don't do that part, but...
Are you aware of what chip sealing is, Larry?
I can't hear you, Pat.
Are you aware of what chip sealing process is?
I, I've got no hearing aids, I don't know.
Chip sealing.
Chip?
Yeah.
No. But that, that doesn't explain the manhole, he's worried about the manholes.
I know. So, if he doesn't know what chip sealing is...
Maybe you should educate us a little bit, tell us what it is and how it works. Maybe we need to, maybe we need to know exactly how the process works.
Chip sealing is spraying a coat of oil and impregnating gravel into it, just like the...
So, so how do you get the, how do you get the gravel and stuff in the existing asphalt?
You don't put it in the existing asphalt, you spray a, a tack coat of oil on the surface, and you spread gravel into it, and you pack it in, and that's the glue. It glues the rock to the surface. The new polymers have, have worked better than the old polymers. So, the, Harry was going to, he chip seals twice. So, it's one layer of oil, a layer of gravel, pack in the gravel. Then he comes in and he sprays oil again, comes over with gravel, packs it in again, and every layer fills in in perfections. So, it's very thin, it's just, if you're, if you're putting three-eighths chips or smaller, each layer is three-eighths of an inch or less. So, whatever your chips are, that's what you're gonna raise the center. The outside, he's got a miller that's eight foot wide. He wants to mill down three inches at the curb, because most of our curbs are very shallow. Garbage trucks can't, our, ours surfaces can't handle heavy garbage trucks. Three inches of hot mix, in his thirty years of experience, it will hold a gra, a garbage truck. And eight feet in, it will only be one inch, because the centers of our streets that he looked at, just the ones that he looked at, that are on that sheet, are good enough that he feels that he's willing to put his name behind this and that we will have good streets for years to come. He said, "If I didn't think this work, would work, I wouldn't even suggest it to you." So, the, the deal with the manholes is pretty mute, because, I mean, it, it's no different than if we sprayed oil and put our gravel in, but they, he would suggest that we use quartz, because quartz is harder, the red rock out of Sioux Falls, so it'll last longer. And the oil that he uses is the new stuff that has the plastics and stuff in it that hold better. So, that, that would be the process, you'd have three inches of hot mix at the curb, eight feet in, you'd have one inch from both curbs in, and then he would come in and spray the two coats of oil and two coats of gravel. That's what he's talking about doing. In, in what's on that piece of paper.
What about when, you know, plenty streets in drop, and they go on in, all of a sudden it's deficit like this? So, what's he gonna fill that in to make it flat, otherwise that, this chipping that you're talking about will follow exactly what's there, right?
If, if there's a hole that needs to be milled and filled, he'll repair that before, before he does that.
I'm not talking holes, I'm talking stretches of road that's gotten big out over the years.
That'll mail out, yeah.
Well, he's not gonna be milling the center. Those, those small imperfections aren't as bad as what you would think they are, and the rock chips and the oils fill those imperfections. The big thing is, I mean, if, if you want a flat, level, smooth floor, then don't vote for, if you want it perfect, don't vote for this. This isn't perfection, he's just trying to, he said, "I want to do what you guys want from me for as cheap as possible, but, but still get your money's worth," were, were his words.
So, where's his outfit from?
Genoa?
Geneva.
Geneva.
So, why wasn't, we talked, you said, we talked about this earlier, why wasn't that guy here presenting his case? And we could've probably got scarred if we talked to the man instead of that piece of paper that tells us what's going on. Somebody should've been here if you're gonna sell something here.
He was here to talk to us, and this was his proposal. The owner of the company was here to talk to Boomer and I and Cheryl, and we discussed this. We, we, we had them do a workup as, with a company that's from Iowa moving into Norfolk. And that information was all in a packet, it's all been presented to you months and months ago. And this is just, Cheryl, Cheryl is just bringing it up again as, as her idea for the secret.
And he said that he wanted to do it when he came to Coolridge, so that he could move his equipment once, and we turned him down. So, I asked him if he would be willing to come up with just us to do it, or if he had other towns up there. And he said he would still come up, but it needs to be soon, because winter's coming.
Right.
So, the entire surface of the twenty-five foot wide street will get armor coated twice for just the repair there?
That's correct.
So, how long are they telling us that it's gonna stay?
I can't hear, I can't hear both of you asking, I can't, I'm...
All right, I'll wait till I get you on.
Not just over the eight foot strips, the whole street will get...
The whole street will be oiled and armor coated twice. And he, and there's crack sealing in there as well, and he has a crack, it's, it's not a tar based, it's a polymer based, and it stretches. So, he says, "The cracks that are there that we don't mill out, I will seal those with that polymer first, and the chip sealing oil will go over that. So, that way, we will be more years down the road before we have any cracks allowing moisture through the surface of our streets."
Do they give, how many years would have to go before we have to do anything to it?
Most definitely, if you have every two to three years.
Every, every five, every five to six years is the norm of chip sealing. Now, if, if you don't have people backing out of their driveway, stop and turning their steering wheel with the wheel stop, it doesn't, you know, that damages a street on a hundred and ten degree day. Again, it's just, a street is like a roof. How, how much damage, what's the weight, you know, what are all these factors? He feels that, he said, "I can't guarantee you how many years it's gonna be," but he thought we would be able to get quite a few years. Do you remember, Larry?
Oh, boy.
Was it five years before we would have to do anything? But he, he felt that the surface below would, would be adequate to last years longer. It would be the chip seal and re-oil in five years. But, but that doesn't matter whether it's his or the process that we used to use that, it hasn't changed.
Pat, I'm not saying I'm disgruntled against this, I'm a little upset, and we talked about it from Coolridge. I thought that guy was gonna come here and give us a presentation himself, for him to open the company himself. That is what should be done, because we're talking a magnitude of street to you. And we're, this is just a, a trial run to see if it's gonna last.
It's fixing the streets? Period. I mean, I'm not sure.
You said three inches to one inch, is that three inches before it's back down, or is that three inches after?
He's milling, he's got a milling machine that's eight foot wide.
Right.
He can mill three inches deep at the curb and not be interested in being done.
So, is it three inches before it's back down?
I think, I think.
It should be three inches.
So, you're gonna have, you're gonna have less than an inch of asphalt in the middle of that street?
No, no, James, this is, let me, let me say this, because when he was talking about this, I thought of Jerry. Because Jerry's talked for years about how the streets have worn here and they're hunk in the beginning, because you go down with that other piece and you put another, and they keep wearing off here. That's exactly what he's saying, is that you go in, you don't have to mill, because it's already worn. What he's saying is that it's slow being the asphalt, and if he lays it, it's not just milling it out to make more of a hole, it's filling it up so it's more level. But it's gonna be deeper asphalt at the edges than it is in the center, but he's not taking the center off.
No, and I, I understand the whole process.
Okay.
One hundred percent. So, you're saying it's gonna be three inches on that curb and an inch, eight inches, eight feet in?
If that's what we want. If, if he, if we, if we want him to mill the whole street up, he'll mill the whole street up.
But that's just...
If we want him to mill, if we want him to mill three inches the whole way across eight foot, he'll do that. He, he, this is his idea, what he thought he could do for us the cheapest, to get the most bang for our buck, but he's willing to do whatever we want.
But, Patrick, I think, if I'm reading you right, James, you're saying at the end, there's only gonna be an inch? No, that's an inch new on what's there, he just don't want to fill it up anymore.
Right, and that inch will last a year.
Well, if it's added, it's a bit, see, I took it. I took it that the begin, that the middle of it is not even going to be touched, basically, it's, it's blending together with the sides. Did you get that, Patrick? When he blends that side in, then you're not even doing much with that side.
He feels the center of our streets are solid enough that it, it will, will handle the traffic. If you think differently, I, I cannot do that, that's your opinion. But I, I'm not about to change your opinion, because I don't have scientific proof, but he's got thirty years in this, and he says, "I'm not coming to this town to do a bad job," because he said, "I want to establish this business for me and my son in this area." And, and he wanted to come to do Coolridge and us the same, I, I save everybody its funds, so...
Let me ask you a couple of questions. What are the alternatives? What is the timetable that you, that anybody can do this? You know what I'm saying? Because, I mean, at some point, you're gonna have some...
I, I would, I would say if we tell a contractor right now, we'd be like, we could get him here this, this spring. So, if we want something done yet this year, these people are our option? Or, or we, are we chance, take our chances? And, and, and we wait for whatever the board would like?
I'm sorry to ask this question, I probably should've known it, but is there a certain period of time that city has to spend the money for roads?
Oh, yes, yeah, by the end of the fiscal year, which is...
December, December, at the end of the...
Yes. And that's restricted, so the restricted money from the state and, and the matching portion. Option.
How much money are we supposed to be spending on the first of your, fourth of May? First, September thirty? How much money is, is, is the deadline that we gotta spend?
I didn't figure the extra third or fourth, but there's, it was two hundred and seven thousand, I think, there in that.
How much?
Two hundred and seven thousand, I think.
I mean, would that not show up on your, on your sheet here?
It should.
It should be a number for you to look at from a standpoint of...
Yeah.
I'm not sure that...
We've got about three months of stuff.
Restricted revenue fund or something?
Well, the point, the, the point is, we have to spend anything on streets, right? Yeah, this has carried over into, how much you go into?
Sixty thousand is what this, thirty-three, thirty-three ten restricted street funds, sixty thousand, four hundred thousand.
That's how much we spent.
That must be a balance, huh, that we have, not spend.
Well, when Arlene came back today, um, I looked, and there's three months of public allocations that never, that weren't areas that been, yeah. At least that, maybe more, but we run right at a hundred and fifteen thousand from the state. And then you have to match that with thirty percent, and then, you know, like I said, it's right at two hundred thousand is what we do to attract people.
And the, the bags of stuff that Patrick is purchasing, the four horse, that, that is the...
There's some of that.
That, that one's come out of it, okay?
Well, for what it's worth, you know, we can, we can, say we've got, you know, we, I've said this forever, we have to spend the funds, but when it's all said and done, we also have to have some streets. And, you know, right now, that's one of the biggest complaints that comes into the office. It's amazing that, that, how many people say, come in or call or whatever, and say, "Why can't we have the lines painted, the parking lines?" And as important as that may be, it kind of makes me shudder a little bit to think about putting brand-new, bright yellow paint on a piece of crap out there. So, I keep thinking, so why don't we fix streets before we think about painting lines? So, I had to chuckle to myself when I drove into Coolridge, and here's this whole main street down there, beautiful black pavement from side to side, and the most pretty yellow striped lines you ever saw in your life, and I don't know if Harry put them down or somebody else. But, you know, we sit and argue, if I can, about how it's done and why it's done, whatever, and we need to think about the people who have thirty and forty years in the business and respect what they, what they have, once in a while. When, when our own people were fixing these streets, you know, you ask about the holes and this and that and the other thing. The reason we didn't have holes after they were fixed was because they went out, milled them out, fixed them, so forth and so on. We haven't had the material, except for the one year after I got an office that we used it. Before that, it was dried out before they got to it, again, by manmade. So, if we can do that five and a half, seven, you know, we know Wyoming and, and Colorado streets, Boomer had said that for a long time, that top surface is gone, because they were never resurfaced, they were never chipped and sealed, they were never, they never held up water, they never were treated properly, because of the lack of, and the restrictions of the kind of material we had. There's different sites that if you go out and look, when they, when, you know, Leon came in, took them to death, when they did have the good material, that they had laid a half a block of really good streets, because the material was right, they had to help, and they did, they did them right. This hasn't been about lack of knowledge, and it hasn't been about any micromanaging. These guys have known what they were doing, and I, it just needs to be set. But if you, if you would defer that they don't, that we don't do this locally, then we need to get people who are experienced in the business and stop micromanaging. And as far as the engineering is concerned, there's some places that the engineering needs to be done. If I have to go dig a trench, and that is gonna go through a water line, then I wanna know where that water line is. I want somebody to go out there and do a survey and so forth and know where that is. If I'm gonna put a fence on the line, I want a survey to know where that line is. But if that road is exactly like somebody has fixed for the last thirty years, and he knows exactly how to fix it, turn him loose. But if that road is exactly like somebody has fixed for the last thirty years and he knows exactly how to fix it, turn him loose. We don't tell John Carter how to go and do his job, he's been there for thirty years. We don't tell James how to sell his insurance, we didn't tell Don how to teach. We don't tell Bob how to teach, we don't tell Larry how to do his job. And it just seems to me like that we sit and haggle over how's this gonna be done and wait, you know, the process rather than the job.
I think you have to ask him what it costs to put two inches on that instead of an inch.
Well, his point was that we've got such a good center in the first place, that you're, that, you know, we can do that if we think it needs two inches. But the point is, it's already there, and like I said, I heard Jerry talk about that. You've got this good top with nothing wrong with it, and then the sites are worn out. It just seemed to me like he was saying exactly what Jerry had said.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, some of these streets are so high in the center, they have to be cut down. Exactly what you're talking about up there when we've done St. Rose. The water puddles in front of the rectory before it can run out to the street because of the oil that's sitting there. The other thing we're talking about, and nobody's saying anything about it, is the intersection by, uh, where you used to live, uh, there, that's got that big dip in. What are we gonna do about that? The one block further north, people have complained and complained and complained about that intersection there. So, if we're gonna do only what you're saying, we're not fixing that stuff.
He, he looked at that?
Well, there hasn't been anything said here tonight about what they're gonna do with that. That intersection where you go west out of town there.
Okay. I, you know what, I, we're back to micromanaging that we're gonna tell this man to tell him to do something.
We're talking about the problems we got in town that we got it correct.
Okay, but, and we had, we had J E O. out here and they looked at it and they said, "Well, but the minimum, we can put some tubes in there." He puts tubes in just like J E O., but they're not gonna charge us forty thousand dollar engineering to do it. I don't know, but it seems to me that for a hundred and twenty-seven or thirty-seven thousand dollars that man bid, and we have a chance to see if he can do the work, they can't be any worse than they are. So, if we wanna sit and talk about it and not spend any money and, and then try to find a way to make it up and throw it down a raffle because we gotta get rid of it, then fine. But it's just like we were talking earlier, that we've done things, you know, we've got no tools, we've got no this, we've got no that. But then when we tried to do something, we know, we can't do that, that would go against what we all know we can't do. So, if we're, if your minds are made up, then we're not gonna go anywhere, are we?
How valid is this document?
Pardon?
How, I mean, how would we need to adhere to this document at all?
Well, the latest one that came out, apparently Larry asked J E O. to do, that's what Steve told me. That's that five hundred thousand dollar deal, half a million dollars for Jerry Street, half block, two tenths of a block.
Okay, but we, we're not.
We, we can't, we can't keep calling the man and having him do this.
No, but we're not obligated to.
We're not obligated to do any of them, we've never done any of them, that's what's wrong. We, we do a one and six and nothing ever gets done because, because of whatever. And he said to me, "There's no way you can do this right now." So, I said, "When did this come up? I've never seen it." Well, and he said, "Larry wanted that." So, so if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna keep changing the game, so, he said, "I would suggest you do just maintenance and decide what you're gonna do next year." So, we just keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. But we have a chance to do what's on that one and six, or is that road that is proposed, that's why I'm sending out there. As is Wyoming. And we would be completing part of the one and five.
And I, I mentioned this the last time we talked about this, I went down the streets of Coolridge, ninety-nine percent of them are cement. And the ones he did, I was not impressed with.
Okay, did you know which ones he did?
There's only three streets in town that are asphalt.
Well, the ones, they told me to, so if, if they're ninety-nine percent what, concrete, you're saying? Where, well, what I saw was ground, so there's not too many con- concrete.
I would say with ninety percent of it was concrete.
Where, where?
Main, but Main Street and a little bit off Main was asphalt, everything else is concrete, it drove around the whole town.
So, what was that black surface I saw, if it was, that was over top of the concrete?
I had, I had no idea what you saw as far as black surface. Where I saw asphalt was down on Main Street and then off on a, a street that went to the south. And it was that milled and I was not impressed with it.
Well, what was wrong with it?
It was, in my opinion, very shoddy.
Based on what, though, I mean?
Based on my opinion.
But, but I mean, is it, was it rough, was it?
It was very rough, very uneven.
Well.
Very uneven, tricky rough. And when I, I guess my opinion, when this guy was talking about, he does Coolridge Streets. Should be more, he does Coolridge Street, one street in Coolridge. And the rest are all cement, just like Wausau's all cement, just like Harding's all cement, like number is all cement. The reason he wants to come up here to Crawford is we don't have cement streets.
We have concrete right out.
They don't have cement streets.
We have concrete right out here, all the way out and around.
We have concrete here, from there to here. Wait, what is that, one street?
No, the, the, Main Street's concrete, right?
No.
Under Main.
Uh, pardon?
Under Main.
Underneath is concrete. And, and Sharon Street's concrete, you said?
That's what, that's three streets out of sixty-nine.
Okay, so, so, so is your plan then to make them all concrete? Because, because up there, there's just as many holes in the concrete as there is in the asphalt.
Where, where?
On Main Street.
Because, because the holes are in the asphalt. The holes are in the asphalt.
So, you want the asphalt taken off the top of the con- what? Yeah, see, I don't get that, and, and I won't argue with it, James, because I don't know, I'm not, you know, obviously, I'm not.
From here to here is, is concrete, from this corner to that corner is concrete.
But that's brand new.
Right.
Right. That concrete in the Main Street's probably a lot older, right?
What concrete is in street?
And we know it is, and, and it is covered with asphalt.
We take that, take that plan that you're thinking about, and I agree. Finish right here with concrete and keep going all the way down, take it out, no more asphalt all the way up. And then figure, then our, our allotment every year would be suffice if we could start right here, and you don't have a time frame.
I wouldn't start here, I would take the worst streets in town, and I, I agree with this guy's opinion, which are the worst streets in town.
They're all done with concrete.
See, we can't put asphalt, or we can't put, we can't go out and do that many streets in concrete.
No, I'm not saying we can't.
So, if we can, that's why I said, if we can get some of the cheaper repair done so that their drivers.
It goes back to spend a dollar to save a dime. It goes back to spending money, and, and you do not know this is going to work, you've been said it yourself. We should see and see what happens. I'm not willing to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to see what happens.
What?
But if I do, if I spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to spend, my grandkids won't have to worry about it.
Well, no, yes, they will, because you seem to think that there's no more upkeep, but there is, James.
What upkeep?
I think Sharon Street.
Boomer, I'm gonna let you talk.
Okay, we're not, we're, we got, that, we have a motion, he's got a motion on the floor.
No second.
Well, no second.
So, it, it died, right, and that official thing?
Well, that's. No second?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by James, second by Bob to adjourn. Start with a thought.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.